Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Mayor Park Town Council for Monday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Councilor McGee.
Here.
Councilor Toner.
Here.
Councilor Burnett.
Here.
Councilor Grinstead, here. Councilor Shreik.
Here.
County Councilor Lynch.
Here.
And Mayor Stack.
Here. I would like to begin by acknowledging the land on which we work and gathers the traditional unceded territory of the initial Abey people. This Agonqua nation has lived in this land for thousands of years, long before the arrival of Europeans settlers. And we are grateful to have the opportunity to be present in this territory. Adoption of the agenda, please.
Be resolved that the amended agenda for the regular meeting of council dated Monday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two be adopted with the removal of item eleven C, Safecore municipal brand application, Brentford County senior games.
Over in secondary, please. Lynn and Dan, any further comments? All in favor, please. Harry, thank you. Have any disclosure concerning your interests? Ted?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm reinstating a few new interests that I claimed before as item number one includes me to the proximity of my home.
Thank you. So any questions on previous council business?
Any answers, Mr. Mayor?
No, thank you. Adoption of minutes, please.
That the minutes of the regular meeting of council listed under item number seven A on the agenda be adopted.
Over in secondary, please. Lisa and Tom, any comments? All in favor? Harry, thank you. So we have no words or presentations, but we have one delegation. And just before we have Mr. Walbert who come to the front to do his evaluation, I want to acknowledge and welcome the former mayor, Mr. Reed, to chambers. He's been away from this room for a while. So Ron, if you want to come forward and. I'll lead the introduction of the rest of your delegation to you.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this. This is, it's quite an honor to be able to do this first time ever presentation to a town council. Next slide, please. So our delegation today consists of myself, I'm Warburton, I'm a twenty-year resident of our fair, a professional chair, see former CEO of Smetra, now I'm managing partner of a three hundred million dollar fund that rests in the software companies across Canada. Our delegation includes Mr. David, who's everyone knows, former mayor of our fair, very well known, obviously. Peter Addis, longtime resident. And well-known businessman. Dean Demontic, former paramedic and now CEO, emergency, such as our prior's largest software company. And then David Pike, who also was a longtime resident and landscape architect. So next slide, please. We think that the waterfront master plan is just an excellent plan because it really does capture all the elements needed to build out our powers world-class waterfront. A number of communities would be very excited to be able to own a waterfront that we have. So it's a wonderful opportunity. It'll be one of the biggest things since we've done the downtown core. And as I say, the staff should be commended for doing an excellent job on the waterfront fast. And we decided to come here because we, there's a few things that we'd like to potentially tweak. But overall, it's an excellent plan. I think it's going to do the town very well. So next slide, please. So the tweak, I guess the first one we have is basically it's a twenty-year build up as proposed by the plan. You know, some of the major things were highest rank in the plan, such as the beach expansion and the breakwater pier. Not scheduled until twenty thirty-two. The beach boardwalk is not scheduled until twenty thirty-three. The Marina projects currently not even scheduled at all. And, you know, we've got an issue with the docks, which are in their useful life cycle. And so with the twenty-year plan, our residents will most likely be having to wait and watch construction under terrorist waterfront for a number of years for being able to really, really enjoy it. And kind of going back in time, we've actually got a, I saw an old nineteen eighty-seven waterfront plan that actually proposed building up breakwater and it was done at some point in the future. Obviously, it was never done. So just having, you know, a plan in place to say, okay, this will be done when is very important. So next slide, please. Number, the other issue that we had was, is we just believe that the harbor master building design and execution, we really think it just essentially lacks vision. It's very high on the priority matrix. And yet, once again, there's no refined plan, no scheduled timeframe for completion. And there's lots of great ideas that have been proposed throughout the whole survey process, you know, such as having a good restaurant, having retail, doing kayak rentals, public facility showers, washrooms, et cetera. But, you know, the problem with the lack of undefined plan for the harbor front master building is led to suggestions of potentially, you know, setting up a food truck or potentially squeezing in a restaurant in the building after it's constructed. And we believe that both of these suggestions lead to a substandard facility that would really not provide the draw that we're looking for for the town residents and from folks from out of town. And by the way, there's four to five thousand people who either cottage or live along that stretch of the Ottawa River that we have here. Our prayers, the only major municipality as you know. And it's a forty-five kilometers stretch of the river between dams. And so there's a huge opportunity to bring in people into the, into downtown if they've got a fun place to go to. That is a real draw where they want to actually go to and then hopefully go downtown thereafter. So the recommendations that we're doing here is essentially complete the waterfront or for plan in two phases, okay? Basically, the first phase would be focus on the west side of the Madawaska River, including it building up the breakwater. Building up the, you know, the beach upgrades of Robert Simpson Park, the Marina, the Gateway Plaza, and with a completion target of twenty twenty-five. And then phase two could be done for all remaining areas, including Hydro Park, McKean Avenue, Bell Park. And we could, we look at that as being something that could be done by twenty thirty or even sooner possible. And we're going to come to later on in the presentation, we'll build out some recommendations and ideas that we have for that as well. But in terms of the priority rankings, okay, according to what the residents did in the twenty-one, twenty-one survey of the hundred and nine respondents, forty-one percent ranked the Marina as the top priority. Thirty-eight percent ranked the beach and Robert Simpson Park as top priority. And yet the next levels down were seven percent from Dell Park and six percent from McLean Avenue. So the recommendation number two is to really separate this whole harbor front master building from essentially the two-phase plan, okay? And this enables to facilitate, you know, commercial development that will help reset our vision. And a major part of that is considering a full-service or season restaurant in the facility. Essentially, we're talking about a good restaurant similar to say Crave or Urban or Lumber Town downtown. But one of the keys being a ground floor waterfront patio so that it can be used by everybody in the community of access to the water. And then you can combine in, in this commercial facility, can kayak rentals, convenience, you know, convenience store. You can do the gas building from there, bait store, potentially nice cream shop, along with public facilities, showers, washrooms, et cetera. And then we can have some interesting things potentially, such as a banquet floor on the second floor or even ideas like playhouse. And then potentially one of the more controversial things is maybe if it's needed to provide viability is to maybe look at a few condos as well. But essentially, the commercial development would be fully funded, okay, via rent through all these commercial activities, okay? And what this does is enable the town to essentially save the two point one million dollars that has been allocated. One point seven five million to the harbor front master building and another four hundred thousand dollars for parking. And so that can be actually developed by the commercial developers, okay? So there's a way that we can save the town some money on that. And that can be done, you know, and the development could be done through these private public partnerships, et cetera. And then moving forward, we can, you know, do feasibility studies. There's a number of things that have to be done in twenty twenty-two by friends and discussing with Robin and her team with regards to, you know, some of the environmental concerns, the geotechnical concerns. It is a fairly low facility. We'd have to build it up probably six, seven feet from where it is right now. And also right now, there's no water sewer or hydro connections. And so we'd have to facilitate the personal well doing that. But, you know, assuming we can get the commercial bill viable and during this, you know, the consultation period over the next couple of years, you know, we could have something that could proceed and hopefully with a completion target of twenty twenty-five or, you know, whenever it's ready to roll, okay? And, but overall, the idea is to have this facility to be a draw for residents and a draw for other towers. Next slide, please. And so essentially, I like to do pictures of other facilities in other towns, just to kind of give the atmosphere and feeling for it. You know, essentially you have a fun facility that really is designed for, you know, the residents to be able and go out there, have a coffee, have a beer, overlooking the waterfront, you know, still have access, you know, the boardwalk is rated Jason to the waterfront. And really a place that you can be a draw for people, not only from our part, but rent through an Ottawa hall across the river. And then this would, you know, provides essentially a ground force facility, by the way, but there was some comments and a presentation in the plan itself where they, it was a kind of a, you know, on the top form, which doesn't make a lot of sense. The idea is really be able to walk along the boardwalk and then see somebody having a beer or have a coffee, join them really easily, just kind of create that atmosphere. A real, a real kind of fun atmosphere that we able to draw people there, okay? And next slide. And so we give my scrills, but rewrote or re-did some, some parts of the diagrams, but just to kind of give you an idea of what this could potentially look like and such that the patio overlook is, this, by the way, this is between where the existing boat launch is and the Marina, that wooded area. And so this would essentially have the restaurant and the patio overlooking the water adjacent to the boardwalk. So the boardwalk, we adjacent to it, you have all the facilities or, you know, per restaurant, sorry, restaurant, but also the retail, gas, bait stores, ice cream shops. You'd also have the public facilities, we have showers and, and washing facilities, all in, all in this facility. And then just had a few ideas in terms of put additional daily parking down there, but really to create a real fun atmosphere, right down the ground floor to be able to draw people in, okay? And then if we move to the next slide, going back to the, to the beach and the waterfront, we have a couple of ideas that we thought were important to bring to the table here. The first one really is where the proposed location of the pier, the pier's going to cost about one point three eight million. That's the estimate right now. But we think that the pier should be moved about thirty meters west, okay, than where it is currently proposed and where the old wharf was, which predates my time here in town. But apparently, if you go down there, there's a little knoll and to kind of build out that wharf, okay? From the existing knoll, and what this does, it utilizes the, the pre-existing wharf as I understand it, created the eddy currents that eventually created the beach, okay? And when that wharf was taken out, the beach disappeared, the Ottawa River with the flows took out old, old beach. And so every year, we're having to refill sand into the beach to keep it going. And the whole beach is moved down east towards the Madawaska River, which creates issues with the various one that children are swimming, you know, being close to that pretty dangerous area whenever the weir is out for swimming and all of that. So this enables the whole thing to move west. I think it will like actually eventually create a larger beach area. And also I was not having to add sand to the beach every year, okay? The design and everything that the class put together would be excellent. I mean, you know, this having benches on the, on the, the pier, lighting, et cetera. So it'd be kind of pretty cool and obviously connected by the boardwalk. The second one that is the second yellow area down. The concept here is basically take out almost, there's a hillside just before the parking area as you go down. And the concept here is almost take out that first hundred feet of the hillside to increase the size of the parking, increase the, the facilitate the turnaround there. Hopefully alleviate some of the parking issues that I know we're having down there. But also that may or may not, we'll have to do some geotechnical drilling and testing. The arm power marble underneath that. And if that is happening, we are for marble, we could actually mine that marble, excavate it and potentially use it as some of the base for, for our breakwater pier. So we can kind of do a combination of both. Anyways, there's some, there's some work to be done there. You'd have to do the proper analysis, do the proper engineering work around that to make that happen. But there is an idea that we should consider. Moving on to the next slide. So in terms of overall, if we looked at this two-fraged, two-phase approach, okay? We've done some, some, some basic costs and where we think we can facilitate the whole project to be funded by the town. And these numbers are taken directly out of estimates from the waterfront master plan. And essentially with the contingency, we're looking at the whole side of the west side of the Marina, west side of the Madawaska River, including Robertson's department, the breakwater beach expansion, fishing dock, the gateway plaza, six million dollars. The Marina, including the dock, all of the dock replacements, but taking out the two point one four three million dollar estimate for the harbor front master boat. Because that would be considered separately in this commercial analysis that we'll be doing for that, okay? So that the overall cost would be six million plus two point one million, your overall cost of eight point one million dollars. And to move to the next one, next slide. We believe the funding that we can facilitate the eight point one million dollars overall is that we believe we can get three million dollars through federal provincial grants, potentially capital reserves, loan charges, community fundraising, and then facilitate that through a five point one million dollar venture. Currently, the, the annual the venture cost to, for the town, the downtown core that we get back in twenty seventeen is actually ending in twenty twenty-two. So we actually have about one, just over one million dollars in debt service savings that are, there's actually, let me take it off the books this year. I'm sure Jennifer's not correctly. But, but the one point one, potentially one point zero zero one million off books. This, the adventure for what we're looking at, the eight point one million dollar with the five point one million dollar adventure would be one point one million dollars. An actual increase of annual service debt cost by about eighty-four thousand per year. So it's something that we believe the town, you know, with increased development charges, taxes, and et cetera, can actually manage. Then if we move to face, phase two, the project costs and all. And, and by the way, just going back phase one, that enables all of the west side of the, of the beach, the Marina, the gateway plaza to be completed, targeting around twenty twenty-five, okay? And so that would be, I think, a real positive thing for, for the town. Phase two, we're looking at could potentially happen thereafter, okay? We're looking to build up Hydro Park, Bell Park, and Clea Avenue Park. You will notice that the third light item where we've actually recommending the being the lookout cost, that's the fire tower lookout, okay? And that looks like it's about a three or four-story building. And we're just afraid that we're going to have children climbing up and potentially falling and it will create a huge insurance risk for the town. So that's one thing we probably recommend not doing. If, if that is done, overall, you can see with contingencies, we'd get about two and a half million dollars for phase two. And, and then in terms, doing the funding, if we started the twenty, the funding in, in say, twenty twenty-five or slower, twenty twenty-six, you could do that by having another one point five million dollar adventure with some federal provincial grad grants, capital reserves, loan charges, et cetera, for a million. And essentially the venture costs would be, you know, three hundred and twenty-six thousand and change per year. And however, but one of the things we actually, when we looked at this was there is a potential to say, hey, guys, we can do the whole thing, phase one and phase two now, if indeed you want to take on about four hundred and eleven, you know, eighty thousand servicing charges in, in phase one. Plus the three hundred and twenty-six thousand service and charges at phase two for a total of four hundred and eleven thousand. Depending on whatever needs and criteria for what town wants to do over that timeframe, there is potential to get all of this done, okay? Except for the harbor master front building that we kind of look at and potentially have an outside developer do on our behalf. For about four hundred and eleven thousand dollars over a five-year period. And it's like four hundred and eleven thousand extra, I should say. That's the difference, by mistake. That's a huge, yeah. So, so anyways, going back to the final slide here is, so next steps, you know, if you need the, the council's interest. You know, we look at the recommending the implementation plan for phase one and phase two. Updating that and be doing some of the financial post for performance. And then being a different plan to in terms of approving the waterfront master plan. And if it is done so, then we can actually get rolling on a number of things, including the, you know, the geotechnical investigations in the beach area, commercial feasibility studies. You know, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, plus doing consulting, planning and engineering, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, construction, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and we get all that. So there's our presentation. Thank you very much for the time. Appreciate that. Let's do this.
Thanks, Ron. It's a lot of, a lot of information there. Appreciate the energy and the effort that went into that. I will turn it off the council for a moment, so questions. Lynn?
A lot of these ideas were ideas that we've been bouncing around for as long as I can remember, talking about the waterfront master plan. Some of them, I didn't understand why they weren't in, in the proposal when it came to us. So I appreciate that, you know, the different aspects that were brought to this. So I, my question is like, what, what do we do with this next? Like, is it something that council will then?
Well, I think what we'll do now is we'll ask staff to take this package, information package, you know, and work it with our existing plan and, and see where they can make some adjustments to the existing plan. You know, council's aware of it, you know, I mean, from my perspective, a twenty-year build-out plan is not acceptable to the community. I mean, I'm seventeen years on council. We've been talking with the waterfront for at least seventeen years that I'm aware of. So, you know, and we, you know, staff did an excellent job with the downtown. We set the precedent and how we can move those major projects along. It's been there, it was successful, and look what the downtown's done there. You know, a zero vacancy in, in the retail in the downtown when it was, you know, basically a sixty-five, fifty-five, sixty-five vacancy a few years back. And, you know, the attraction of movie companies, just, it's becoming a destination. And in my time here, the waterfront was sort of the second phase of that and conversations that, and it was important to connect those two and providing access for the people who come off the waterfront to, to use it. I think what's important in my mind about the waterfront, that whatever is done, the, the part around Robert Simpson Park needs to be a high priority of the list. We need to first make an impression by doing something that will serve the largest percentage of the population. And that's swimming and access to that park and, you know, and those kinds of things. Maybe on, along the Madawaska, some fishing and then, you know, develop things other than that. But to provide accessibility to the lower part of that park and provide the average family an opportunity to go down there and do it. And for the out-of-towners, as you say, to come in with picnic baskets and spend the day there and hopefully visit the downtown and shop. But, you know, it certainly, in my opinion, has to be a condensed, condensed timeframe from twenty years. We've, we've been working twenty years on it, so it needs to. So I think, you know, staff have done a great job. The input's great. I don't think anybody really disagrees much with the content of that. I think, you know, that's a big step. Everybody's on board with that. So just providing it back to staff with your proposal and giving them a chance to look at how they can implement some of that and bring it back to council, I think is the, the next step. So Robin, I'll put that in, in your hands. Tom?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I think it was great. I certainly agree with two of your comments for sure. And I believe that the breakwater wharf, I don't think it should have ever been taken down in the first place. I think they could have, you know, piled it or something so that it would have been safe, that there would have been no kids going under it. And I'm glad to hear that you don't agree with that four-story tower because that was one of my biggest concerns, that it would be a real liability for the municipality. Thanks very much for the presentation.
And, you know, as, as your honor pointed in, thirty-five years ago, council of the day said there should be a new breakwater, so Chris?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to you, Ron, and your entire group. Your presentation, it was very gracious and complimentary to the staff and the hard work that they've put into the waterfront master plan. And I do agree that I would like to see the whole project be completed a lot, a whole lot sooner. And that would be, that would be my wish. I do, I know you looked at Jennifer when you were taking the money that we're saving from the downtown because I just want to remind everybody that we do have a long-range capital forecast shortfall that we're trying to, you know, catch up and to, I guess, to alleviate that. So there's, there may be like a balancing act that we're going to have to do, but I think in a perfect world, we can maybe do, we can do both. But anyway, thank you for the presentation, but I just wanted to bring the point up about the long-waged capital forecast shortfall that we do have. So we have to keep that in mind. Yeah, yes.
That's a good point, Chris, but we also need to recognize our prayers have been in a boom for the last few years. It will be probably for the next five to seven. So our revenue base has never been higher and it's growing every day. And I think now is the time to seize that opportunity because in the, in the next decade, you know, those development charges will wind off. You know, the land is being sold out, camper is going to settle down and the revenue base will, will change somewhat. Yes, the ongoing property taxes will be there, but I'm sure between John and Jennifer, they'll have lots of room for that tax base with, when we look at our streets and roads, things like that. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Ron, and your team for the presentation. I'm on the same page as the, the mayor. Ten years ago, under Mayor Reed, we, we took the opportunity to take this ten-year downtown revitalization. And as you can see from today, as Walker said, that we're above and beyond what I expected at that point. Using that kind of money in our vision to go forward with the waterfront plan, same idea. We got to think outside the box momentarily, pay the dues, and ten years from now, council will be sitting here saying, what's our next big project? So thanks again for your presentation.
Thank you. Ted, yeah?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation, and I guess before we get into this too deeply. It would be my desire to know who owns the land, I don't believe the town of Armpire does. It's either Ontario Hydro, under the old regime, or issues notions, and how cooperative they would be. And we want to know that before we start spending a lot of money on investigations and whatnot, that's the key. And I'm down with the beaches. The expansion of the beaches all beyond the prop, the high watermark, and I guess under the jurisdiction of entries and oceans, and how cooperative they're gonna be.
For sure.
Yeah, that would have to be the first part of the investigation for sure to determine and and come to an agreement, like we lease our own marina from oceans and fish regions. Okay, thanks very much, Ron, appreciate the effort, and we'll be in touch, Robin will know us now, she has direction from council, she'll meet with staff. And we'll talk again about her timeline coming back, counsel. Thanks for the effort, I appreciate it, guys, very much. Okay, we have no public meetings and no matters table, they're deferred, so in the staff reports, and the first one is the patio extensions.
Here's a section.
Just a minor thing, I agree. So, twenty two, so we're, then sorry with that. That's awful, they didn't write it in.
Alright, thank you, uh, members of council, and it's a report that, uh, that our recreation department was happy to put together, knowing that we'll be. Uh, kind of back to the ways of old for our summer events programs for twenty twenty two. Uh, so just a quick look back here, so historically, the town of Armpire does host several marquee events for the summer, most of which are based at, uh, at Robertson's apart. And obviously, due to the restrictions of the COVID nineteen pandemic, many of these events. Uh, were pushed to virtual auctions, uh, in twenty twenty two, and in twenty twenty one, some unfortunately just had to be canceled out, right? So with key public health indicators improving and the change in several restrictions. Pretending to recreation and public events, the town expects that all of these events will be able to proceed as per normal and adding new events to to our summer events calendar. So just a quick breakdown, and then I'll get into a few things in a bit greater detail, so, uh, June includes Recreation and Parks Month. Um, that is highlighted by the Participaction Community Better Challenge, as well as a Recreation Passport Initiative that we're gonna begin. Uh, of course, the focal point that really is the kickoff to Summer in the Town of Armpire is our Pride Palooza Festival. On the fourth of June, uh, and and the weekend following that is when our Concerts in the Park Series commence, beginning on the twelfth of June, and that will run. Uh, for a ten week period that you'll see kind of concluding on the fourteenth of August. Uh, of course, July first, um, is kind of one of our big spectacles, uh, celebrating our nation and Canada Day. Capped off by the fireworks on on the first of July, and also we're quite pleased to have our Dragon Boat Festival, uh, returning on the sixteenth of July after a. A two year hiatus. Uh, and then lastly, we wrap up, uh, August with with two more concerts in the parks. Um, and then we move into, uh, our night market, which we presented a couple of weeks ago with the grant that we received. Uh, for this from the, my Main Street Grant, um, on the twenty seventh of August, so we're looking forward to that new event on our calendar. So, uh, Recreation and Parks Month, uh, is celebrated in the month of June, and that's a movement that promotes, uh, the benefits of recreation. Uh, and parks for physical, social, and environmental health, uh, promoting local programs, events, parks, and facilities that are. Uh, available for all citizens to enjoy and raising awareness for the role that these recreation programs and park spaces play. As a pathway to individual community and environmental well being, and I think we've certainly seen the value of of these outdoor recreation. Spaces and amenities, uh, over these past few years, uh, that Participaction, uh, Community, Community Better Challenge, uh, will also run this month. Uh, and what that program is, uh, first of all, you you apply as municipality to to be involved in this, so we're fortunate enough to. I've received a grant through Participaction in the amount of one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars for this year. And that will allow us to offer further barrier free recreation activities, uh, for all to participate, um, and that, uh. Uh, that calendar will be, uh, released over the next couple of weeks as part of this Recreation Passport that, uh, that I'll speak about shortly. So what we can do through the Community Better Challenge, um, is is work with our residents to to have them track their personal. Uh, physical activity minutes, uh, through the Participaction App, which would be linked to, uh, the Town of Armpire account, um, and that would give, uh. Our municipality the chance to be crowned as Canada's most active community, uh, with a tidy prize of one hundred thousand dollars, not too bad, so. Um, that is also the benefit of tying this to Recreation and Parks Month and our Recreation Passport is. Offering opportunities and activities to to get people active and moving throughout our community. So just a note on the Recreation Passport, so what we're putting together, um, is a passport to to get people to to kind of get it stamped and then entered into to win some prizes. By completing a variety of the the free activities and programs and events that we'll be offering throughout the month of June. And encouraging them to to go to our different park spaces, as well as our next miss center and take in a variety of these. Uh, activities that'll be, you know, in the water, uh, on the ice, on the, on dry land, on the trails, uh, you name it, so we're looking forward to to offering. Things like that, and and also allowing us to, uh, test the waters on some different, uh, programming ideas that we're, uh, we're starting to to put out there, and we'll see what the the public response is to that. So Pride Palooza is Saturday, the fourth of June, and of course, that features musical performances, family entertainment, bouncing castles, food trucks, vendors. Uh, special year this year, and then we'll be celebrating Armpire's one hundred and sixtieth birthday. Uh, and of course, so the the train show that has been a staple for Pride Palooza for for. Five years now, not including the last two, um, will return to the next miss center on both the fourth and fifth of June. Um, and also tying into that weekend, uh, the Sunday Market, uh, will return to the downtown on Sunday, the fifth of June. Um, and as opposed to having the, uh, the movie at night on the Saturday, um, which is both. Quite costly venture and not overly well attended, it does get quite cool at night that time of year, and you do have to wait for, you know, till after nine thirty to really start the show. Uh, we've, we're gonna partner with the O'Brien Theater to offer free movies, uh, on the Sunday that I think will tie in quite nicely to the opening. Um, of the Sunday Market and and of course support, uh, a local business that has certainly had their fair share of, uh, troubles through the pandemic. So Sound of Music continues its return to Robert Simpson Park, uh, through concerts in the park that will run the twelfth of June through the fourteenth of August. Uh, that will feature ten different performances throughout the summer, uh, every Sunday from two until four, uh, at Robertson's apart. Uh, you can watch for announcements on all of our performers that will come out later this week on the twelve. Uh, Canada Day, kind of continuing the same thing of, uh, of music at Robert Simpson Park, and of course, we always have family entertainment, face painting, games. Uh, balloon animals, cake, because everyone loves cake, uh, food vendors, and of course, everyone's favorite part of the day. Uh, the fireworks display, uh, off the, off the island, uh, below the pier, it usually kicks off around, uh, nine, four and five, yeah. And our sixth annual Dragon Boat Festival will return this summer, uh, the date is set for Saturday, Saturday, the sixteenth of July. Again, with Robert Simpson Park kind of being the central hub for that, and this also kind of incorporates our marina. We're expecting, uh, over four hundred and fifty participants, uh, and more than five hundred spectators, so this is certainly an event, uh, that. Unfortunately, there was no way to to do this in a socially distanced way over these past two years, or in a virtual way for that matter. Uh, and a lot of our, uh, past participating teams have been reaching out for quite some time. Um, to determine if we're gonna ride or quite excited to to be returned to Armpire, uh, this July. Uh, and our night markets, um, again, we we did present this a couple of weeks ago with council, but just to reiterate some of the points. This, uh, this this grant was, uh, you know, through supporting communities that are trying to adapt from from COVID nineteen. Um, providing support for projects that seek to revitalize neighborhoods and reimagine public spaces, including main streets and. And downtown strips, and obviously, we've seen the success of of obviously what's happening in our downtown and the success we tie with our Sunday Market, so. It seemed like a very, uh, a very suitable fit, um, and an idea that was born out of our inclusivity and diversity, uh, committee, so we're we're quite pleased with that, and we. Submitted a grant, um, and quite, uh, quite fortunate to receive over, uh, thirty eight thousand dollars in funding for for this event that we. intend to keep as an annual staple in our summer events calendar. Uh, and again, funding will be prior, so just a bit about the grant funding is prioritized for projects that support sustainable placemaking strategies, uh, for the geographic area. Uh, that are designed to support the economic and social benefits, uh, for equity seeking groups that include Francophone women, indigenous, racialized groups. Black communities, newcomers, youth, people living with disabilities, uh, the unhoused, low income people, trans and non-binary people, and or the LGBTQ plus. So, uh, that is set for Saturday, the twenty seventh of August, uh, from four PM to eleven PM. Again, following a similar format to what we'll have for our Sunday Market, so in that downtown area of John Street between Elgin and Rock Lane. Uh, with this night market featuring food vendors and artisans from various, uh, various ethnicities. An opportunity for attendees to become more acquainted with, uh, their neighbors and the diverse cultural backgrounds, um, that they come from. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Graham, again, my apologies for not, uh, missing that, questions, Lisa.
Um, one question I had to practice, which is kind of exciting. Are they being a better person, I don't want to plan it for our hard win. Is there, do they pro rate the population for sixteen hours as part of doing it, or are we up against city auto?
Yeah, you're, unfortunately, it's not kind of prorated based on like a per capita model or anything like that, but there are other prizes as, you know, for the. Um, you know, second and third place, um, you know, the, uh, the most active, uh, uh, community within a province, so there's. Prizes for the, the top communities in each province, and surprisingly, it has not been those major city centers. Um, that have been coming out on top, whether it's out, you know, the 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 national competition, uh, or just within each province, because the, I guess they don't have that similar. Interest or 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 bend with to kind of get everybody to, you know, together for something like this, so it has been some of the the smaller municipalities that have found, uh. Found success through through having, you know, things like a, like a Recreation Passport, like where what we're looking to do this year, just hosting a variety of events to to bring as many people together as possible.
And for the night market, um, so you mentioned it goes to Rock Lane, what is the reason that we're not going all the way as we travel Alaska, that last little?
Yeah, I I think when we submitted the the application, and again, it's still very early days yet, there's still lots to go in our work plan, which includes, um, you know, bringing on. Uh, you know, staff, uh, as part of the grant that we received, so we're fortunate enough, we get to kind of create employment opportunities through this grant. Uh, it was really just kind of mimicking the model that we already know, uh, works for for our Sunday market, uh, so that was kind of just the the jumping off point. Uh, as we kind of go through this, should we have that overwhelming support and interest that it that it grows to something that needs more, that we can explore that that opportunity further.
Dan, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, with the participation, can we marry up your participants that are doing the activities with the silver chain? There's no money for the silver chain, just the bragging lies between the counties, and it's starting. We can ask our participants to go onto the silver chain and register and use their their participation there as well, if you're absolutely, yeah, thank you.
I think they're in for county wardens lost a few years, right, so it's time to beat Lannick. Anyone else?
Or did, Christian? Yeah, sorry, I don't know what the silver chain is, what is that?
It's the challenge between Lannick and Rantford County, and I'm sure since my time at the county, that. Okay, and some changes, but it's a physical activity thing that you register for, and one county challenges the other.
Okay.
What do they make the wardens do to this time, that, here's to make them wear, you know. Rantford County lost, they have to wear Lannick County T-shirt, buy the Lannick County flag and stuff like that, and unfortunately, Rantford County did lose a few dinners, so. It'd be, uh, good. Just an additional thing, I was buying my duck tickets to Giant Tiger on the weekend and the Rotary Club. And the gentleman there mentioned that on the same day as the, as the, uh, the night, uh. Markets, they're having an event in the park that day as well, too, so it's gonna be a pretty full day.
Yes, they will be having their butter charts festival, which, uh, I think that would be, uh. Sweet, sweet treats that day, and then a fun, a fun night out, so yeah, it'll be a very busy, busy Saturday.
So they're on Sunday with the market, it makes for a good twenty four hours. Okay, thanks a lot, Graham.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So we're now at staff reports, and the first one is a patio extension, Ray.
The council adopted bylaw to amend by law seven, six, nine, dash, seventeen, to include provisions for the construction of pedestrian sidewalk bypasses.
Moving second, please, and then, Robin, you start it.
I'll take this, um, council will recall back on April eleventh, we brought forward a report to, uh, support the. Uh, inclusion of policies in our licensing bylaw for outdoors, uh, patio sidewalk cafes. Uh, that will allow these parking stalls with pedestrian bypass platform, uh, around them. And that council, uh, agreed to waive the twenty twenty two license fees for sidewalk patios, uh, again, this year in support of our licenses, who are. Hit so hard with COVID, um, over the past two years, council had asked, uh, a couple of questions at that time around the idea of the pedestrian bypass platforms, so. We did, uh, do some more research, we looked at, um, patio policies across Ontario, and what other municipalities were doing. Uh, came up with, um, some policies that we think, uh, will cover, cover our concerns around liability, uh, the ability to, uh, have an accessible. Path of travel for the public and that kind of thing, one of the questions the councils asked was whether we could actually design the bypass, um, to ensure consistency of the construction, which is a fair question. Um, because a a building permit is required for the construction, it needs to be designed by a designer, professional, uh, designer, so we can't prefer the designs ourselves, but we did find. Um, some really good policy guidance that showed, uh, some diagrams of what we would expect a standard, uh, patio layout to be that includes. Uh, room for the, uh, pedestrian access to be completely accessible, and we included, uh, drawings within the, uh, policy that show what we would anticipate. That they would look like, and so you hopefully get a fairly standard design, similarly with materials, we recognize that a fairly standard, uh, requirement across the provinces. A standard pressure treated wood, uh, construction that, uh, as to stands the test of time and wear and durability for, uh, for the amount of use that they get as pedestrian bypasses. One question was with respect to whether a lottery system should be instituted to provide control over the number of patios, we might see it's. We can, council gets to, uh, and he mentioned there's several restaurants in our downtown now, which is amazing, uh, for us. And if they all decided in that small, uh, a small but triangle way downtown that we have to, uh, take advantage of this opportunity, how could we fit them all in? We looked at, um, you know, the uptake that we had in the pilot project, there were only a couple of, uh, restaurants, three, I think, who undertook it, even though that was a free program that. We basically just set up and said, go ahead, um, we also know that, um, across Ontario, we found that. Nobody really had instituted lottery systems other than really big municipalities, and it didn't seem like there are any in place right now, so it doesn't appear to be an issue. Uh, in other places, we're hoping that, uh, we just recognize that, that want to do it, they're able to do so to not, uh, not cause, uh, you know, a huge lack of parking in our downtown, it was a result. And then finally, uh, we were asked about the town, uh, assisting financially, and we just wanted to know again that we do have a CIP program now that includes a financial incentive of up to fifty percent. To a maximum of twenty five hundred dollars for the design and construction costs for creating an outside, um, patio cafe for a commercial mixed use property. And, uh, the professional services and construction itself would be eligible to be, uh, to be, uh. Uh, incentivized under that program, so there is a bit of a, of an assistance for for those who want to take advantage of it. So what we've done is included, as I said, policies, uh, to amend the original sidewalk path policy. Outlying requirement for building permit, construction materials, keeping drainage flowing, those kinds of, uh, important issues around using parking spaces for patio. And then the bypass, uh, for pedestrians. using parking spaces for patio and then the bypass for pedestrians. So that by law has been included for council's consideration tonight. And we're happy to answer any questions they have on on the provisions of the bylaw.
Thanks, Robin. Comments or questions? No?
Oh, Chris. Yeah, thank you. Robin, I'm I'm sure I read and I did write it down, but are they allowed to take up two parking spot, two parking spots, right?
That would be the general anticipated amount of spaces required to be able to accommodate a pedestrian bypass, yes.
Okay. And now in a situation where I mean, if a restaurant might have one one in front of their spot, who are they going to, who's going to get, how does that work? They have to talk to their neighbors and see who's the most lenient or who's the most receptive. That I just noticed that there's a couple of restaurants that that's going to happen.
Yeah, I think what the policy leaves about is the discretion of the director of operations to ensure that it's operationally successful. So you know, there may be one side that's more appropriate than the other. There may be street furniture in the way or, you know, a lamppost or something that just makes it impossible to go to one side or the other. We'll we'll look at each case individually and make a determination and try and impact, be at least impactful as we possibly can be on on the other businesses.
That's great. It's a great report. And I look forward to the summertime. I hope we people respond and sign up.
Okay, all in favor then? Carrie, thank you. So the next one is their water leak policy adjustments.
The council offer as by law, repeal by law five nine two three dash ten, replace the policy number F S B R dash nine, a revised water leak adjustment policy.
Over secondary, please. Lisa, Tom. Now, I established tonight, there's a Jennifer in the jam. So who's starting this?
I'll open it. Jennifer, go through all the details. Thank you, Nurse Deckers Council. We're here tonight to talk about the water leak adjustment policy. So just to give a bit of background, so after that two thousand nine, two thousand ten, where the town wide water meter installation happened, the town did implement a water leak adjustment program. And that program, what it did is it really helped provide some financial relief to residents who did experience some sort of unexpected jump in a water consumption due to a water leak on the property. So, you know, as per best practices, we always do try and look at and update policies. We try and look at that whatever five years to see if any updates are needed. So in this case, we had a look at this policy and we did do some updates. So and as part of this program, just to give counsel a bit of context on how many the adjustments we get per year, it is pretty small. Over the last couple of years, we have only had three to five water leak adjustments per year. And and the dollar value of the adjustments are pretty small. So overall annually, the average was only about fifteen hundred dollars was the cost for running this program. That said, you know what I mean? To be able to provide those rate pairs who do have that big, huge water bill, this is this little bit of an adjustment, it definitely made a a real impact to them after that program. So I do want to highlight though that we are just updating an existing policy. We don't expect, however, any a huge volume changes to the number of adjustments we're going to get. So therefore, we don't adjust there to be any sort of huge, like another larger additional financial impact or any kind of these policies. And Jim will go through the details. We actually keep the calculation of the adjustment the same. We're more just a little bit more of a housekeeping and some of the scope around the policy. We've done some updates. And we also did take the policy to C S A and they they had positive feedback on the policy as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Jen to go through some of the the details.
Everyone. So having the changes, the scope of the policy was adjusted from a one time financial assistance to one every five years per property during the term of the applicant ownership of the property. Updated eligibility eligibility requirements to clarify items such as qualification requirements of having at least two times the average of the consumption. Some additional highlights is that a customer's account must be standing, account balances must be paid up to date. And this policy also provides additional factors that would make it claim ineligible such as if the excess water costs are covered by another funding, such as an insurance. And another highlight would be that it provides updated application and notification form for residents. So again, there's no change to the calculation of the credit. We don't expect any kind of financial impact from the updated of this policy. This review and update of the policy was just a house planning procedure to provide additional information and clarification of the existing policy to residents.
Question? Okay, thank you. I just going to make one comment and fine with this, but just don't take us back to two thousand nine and ten. I need that.
Two questions. One is from the leakage, the amount of it, do we give them a credit on the wastewater as well? And then part two, there's no using the leakage to fill my pool.
No. And so in the policy, it does state that there are exceptions to the policies such as like water in your lawn, filling your pool. It's very specific. It's only for water loss due to a faulty machine.
Thank you.
All right, then. All in favor, please? Carrie, thank you. Jan, Jennifer. So you have the proclamation.
The council proclaimed a thirteen twenty twenty two espalda de in the town of Marquard.
Moving secondary, please. Ben? No secondary? So then it's dead.
I'll second it because I'd like to speak to it.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm prepared to second it myself. There's definitely going to be discussion on it, but okay. You want to go first?
Sure. I just I have to admit that last year I didn't have as much information as I do this year for this request, and I will not be able to support it this year. In the spirit of inclusivity and acceptance, we want to be open to requests such as this one. However, this organization is questionable, in my opinion, from my research. Falun Dafa or Falun Gawn is a fairly new Chinese religious movement that started in nineteen ninety two by Master Li Hongjing, who claims to be an interdimensional god. They are not an inclusive group within their beliefs. They are known to be anti-LGBTQ, for example. The founder teaches his belief that homosexuality makes one unworthy of being human. It is my opinion that they canvass wherever possible for felon Dafa Day proclamations as a type of information laundering, if you will, so that they can cite acceptance by different municipalities as a means of legitimacy. We want to be an inclusive for all, which is why I supported it last year, not knowing what I knew. But we cannot be supportive of groups, in my opinion, that are not inclusive themselves. And knowing more about them now, I do not feel that it's in our best interest to support this request. Thank you.
Interesting. Anyone else? Chris, yeah?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Lynn, for that. That's that was very, very well, very well said. Same as last year, I can't support it. You know, my, you know, my reasonings are similar to Lynn's. I also want to add that to me, it's it's a little bit too of a religious and a political group that's the town shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't be the, I guess, then the way to for them to look for acknowledgement. Anyway, so I'm I'm I'll be voting for this.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the presentation documentation that we received from this group, there's probably twenty five major cities and towns that supported their proclamation in twenty twenty one. So I'm wondering what what they did, what presentation they made to make their councils go. We're somewhat unique. Last year, we said no. And this year, it's going to be a no. So just to let the other big boys know that we're unique in the valley. Yes, thank you.
Okay, Lisa?
Your point, Dan, it's possible that they didn't scratch the surface because they don't publicize what they put out there.
Sorry, I second hear you.
It's quite possible that they didn't publicize what, you know, unless you scratch the surface, you don't necessarily see what their teachings are all about. I just wanted to provide a quote from their founder, the homie, just to speak to, to spin on Lynn's point and my concerns from last year again. The God's first target of annihilation would be homosexuals. It's not me who would destroy them, but God. God cannot tolerate their existence and will destroy them. That that is why I don't think that we this isn't certainly when someone requests a proclamation, you know, all the the boxes get ticked and they may not be sharing their their founding principles by the town. They they're going to be homophobic, they're going to be racist, they're going to be misogynist.
Anybody else? Yes, these comments are a bit of an education. Because Sunday is bad time online, looking up, trying to educate myself a little bit better this year. And I didn't find this kind of information. I found that in China, they were persecuted, that the Chinese government, because they're anti-communist approach. They were persecuted across the country and murdered in fact, and and things like that for a number of years. So, you know, this alarms me, what I'm being told tonight. What I would like though is that let's share this information with Robbins, which you can share it all with the rest of council, because I'd like to know the sources and and follow up on it myself. So, and all in favor? So it's not Carrie. So committee report is for corporate services.
The council received the corporate services advisory meeting meeting minutes of March seventh, twenty twenty two as information.
Moving secondary, please. Ted? Lisa? Can you comment, Ted? No? Okay, all in favor then, please? Carrie, thank you. No notice of motions, counting down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking to Chris, the silver chain challenge is on for twenty twenty two. The warden encourages all municipal members of council and all residents to register for the challenge and start clocking their kilometers either by walking or riding a bike. It's an opportunity to improve mental and physical health, be more active in our community, and hopefully win the bragging rights. More information on the town's website. As Paul Morrow, the CEO, has announced his retirement in August, the recruitment committee has been struck. Warden Debbie Robinson will chair the committee with members Peter Emo, old warden, Jennifer Murphy, old warden, and Robert Sweet, old warden. Tina Poplinsky, you may know as a former journalist, but the Pembroke Observer has been hired as the new county renter's media relations and social media coordinator. A resolution approved the hiring of a contract childcare supervisor in group seven, seventy thousand to eighty thousand has been approved and it's being paid for by the federal Canada Wide Early Learning and Childcare Fund. No cost to us, while it is to our pay, it's going to be paid to the feds. A resolution approved the hiring of one county planner position, the planning division to be heard in the group seven. I know on our side, we had a tough time getting Peyton into place, and they're going to have a bigger and better group seven person. So we wish them luck. A resolution was approved to continue flying the Ukrainian flag at the county administration buildings until the end of the current term of council. C N L is hosting an industry day on the second of June at the C N L's new logistics building at the entrance to the Chalk River Laboratories. And Warden Debbie Robinson of Wrenchen Valley Township and John Ryanwald of Wrenchen Hills have both announced they will not be running the upcoming election. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, on the weekend, we had to let the residents of our part in the surrounding communities, the Algonquin Trail is currently being patrolled by the O P P and the Rantrew County All Train Vehicle Club Wardens. As a result of these, last weekend, the following information is being made available. Eight charges laid by O P P, multiple infractions could have been laid in some instances at the discretion of the O P P. One cannabis truck, one seatbelt truck, one illegal contraband cigarettes or Ottawa Valley recreational trail, one no plate, two chin straps, one under each passenger in McDabb, one improper no helmet in McDabb. One formal warning for a twenty year old red X M R who is known in the community in our empire as having caused numerous nuisance on roads and trails. So he's been given the warning. Next time it's a bigger and better friendly. So just to show that the trail is being monitored, I know we get a lot of complaints about the dust, people screaming through, but hopefully now they'll realize that the O P P in ticket will be issued. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Dan. Any comments for Dan? Then, yeah?
Not really for Dan, but just as a follow up, maybe now we could ask the O P P to better monitor our streets now that the A T Vs are back out in full force on on the town streets that they're they're not going to the trails. They're using their side by sides and A T Vs as vehicles. And just last week, I've seen a number of them out across the bridge on Daniel, crossing the bridge and and all like it's just, it's crazy. So I was in favor, while I wasn't originally, but you guys made good points and and I voted for that. But it's I wish now that we could turn the clock back because I feel that our our streets are being overrun by the A T Vs at times.
Well, you know, I got to tell you, first of all, you know, I'm a big proponent of the trail and A T V use and all that, but Saturday or Sunday, I forget that it was in the office, we went back up John Street and the A T V passed me right in front of the theater heading north. So it wasn't going to the trail. So, you know, we could, we should, you know, ask the O P P. But it's like anything else, and I keep using the comparison. How many thousands of cars run between our part and Rantrew on the highway with a ninety or a hundred kilometer speed zone? And they don't drive that, right? So, you know, there are hundreds of those vehicles out there, and there are a few people in there that are causing a problem. And they need to be caught and charged.
Exactly.
Because, you know, I said from the beginning, it's those three out of a hundred that spoil it for everybody else, you know? And, you know, like Dan's report tonight shows that they're definitely monitoring the trail. And and, you know, that's important to get that out to the public. So the people are running, are running those vehicles on the trail realize as well, but that, you know, it's not just a free rein there. But yes, you know, I wish to draw to the attention of the O P P because they are, I see them in my own neighborhood. You know, I've stopped a few and explained, you know, the rules. And I always open up by saying, look, I've had A T Vs for years, you know, I'm a big proponent of the trail. But, you know, some of the responses you get are, you know, the majority of them, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Some of them aren't that pleasant, you know?
It's incredible how many I see on workdays that are flying up and down William, when the trail is right there, but they're going up and down William.
Yeah. And dirt bikes aren't even allowed on the trail and they're out there. So and those dirt bikes aren't road where they're not, they don't have signal lights, you know, they're they're not equipped for the road. So, you know, and to be frank with you, they're running on William and the O P P station is right there. Not that the officers are in there all the time, but it doesn't seem to matter to those young people on those dirt bikes where they're where they're running, you know? Okay, nobody else? Hey, so we have three bylaws. Oh, sorry, I took that off as as correspondence because I had it on there to talk about. Sorry, correspondence, yeah.
The correspondence package number I dash twenty two dash May dash ceremony, we received this information filed accordingly.
Moving secondary, please. Chris and Lynn and?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page nine, the Ontario government is investing one billion planned to help seniors and recovering patients stay in the homes they love. More over the next three years to further expand home care. On page twelve, the government is launching a new training program, Better Jobs Ontario. Anyone looking to train for in demand work, including those on social assistance who are self-employed, gig workers, youth, or newcomers to the province can apply to start learning the skills they need. This training program will pay up to twenty eight thousand dollars in tuition and other costs for short duration training programs that allow job seekers to match their skills with the needs of hiring employers in the community. Expanding on a second career program, more applicants will now be eligible for up to five hundred dollars per week in financial support for basic living expenses. So if you don't got a job and you know someone, one company that does, they'll only get training and get if you don't got a job and you know someone, one company that does, they'll only get training and you get twenty-eight grand plus five hundred bucks to live. On page forty-two, the A M O Secretary Treasurer is requesting nomination for the twenty twenty-four A M O Board of Directors. So if there's any counselors that want to take the leap of faith at A M O, it's open. Page forty-two, the Ministry of Environment Conservation and Park has temporarily suspended the need to comply with the requirements under onsite excess soil regulation that came into effect on January first. That was the one where if you're going to move soil off your property to another property, you had to have permission to move it and somebody had to do an environmental check. It didn't really affect the town a lot. However, we had to follow the regulations and now they suspended it. Yep. On page forty-two, a new regulation sets out pilot parameters to allow electric large quadracycles on roads in Ontario, beginning April first, twenty twenty-two. Municipalities may must opt into the pilot program to the C E O. Have we opted into this program?
We have not opted into the program. Quadracycles in this pilot project program refers to the the twelve plus-seater bicycles that are used for typically in tourism areas to get people from place to place at winery. So I think
Sort of spinning in memory, didn't mean a C E O.
See it being used in a winery type situation where you go from one to the next, but in a tourism, in our area, I don't think that would be as practical for tourism potential. At any rate, we did not opt into the program this time, but we keep an eye on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? I moved one of those bicycles.
To the challenge.
No, 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 it was in
Wondering.
Tennessee, it was a licensed one. Okay, now we have the three bylaws. We need to do any of them separately. Avery?
The following bylaws be entered hereby enacted in pass, bylaw number seven three zero zero dash twenty-two, amend licensing bylaw for the patio extension bypasses. Bylaw number seven three zero one twenty-two, adopt the two thousand twenty-two tax rate. The bylaw number seven three zero two dash twenty-two, adopt the water leak adjustment policy.
Move in secondary, please. Lisa and Tom, comments? All in favor, please? Carrie, thank you. So announcements, announcements, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Men's Shed is hosting a dementia workshop at their site on Nyman Street this Wednesday from zero nine thirty to eleven thirty. A mobile eatery named King of Munchies is now located on Elgin Street near County Treasure is now open. And speaking to Lynn, it's good news for A T V owners and cyclists that live on the east side of the Maddow Oscar Bridge. The Ranthru County All-Terain Vehicle Club is currently having discussions with O P G and the town about having access from the trail to Decasse Street. If successful, it will definitely be a bonus to the users for the trail for food, fuel, and accommodations, and they shouldn't be crossing Maddow Oscar Bridge anyways. There is a public hearing dealing with the application to amend this Chalk River Laboratory site license to authorize the construction of a near service disposal facility from thirty May to third June at the Best Western Conference. And sidebar, Mr. Mayor, fireworks last night were terrific. Thanks, friends. Been a couple of years since we watched that kind of stuff. Lots of kids on the walkway. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I have a public request. A firefighter has lost his Gloucester Fire Department badge number one forty-two. If found, would you please drop it off at our local fire department or any other municipal buildings? Much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Okay, Chris, Lynn?
I just to further on the dementia workshop that the Men's Sheds having, they had their event on Saturday. I'm sure you're going to speak to it, so I won't speak about that. But just to remind residents that they have workshops all week long, not just the one at the Men's Shed. Some are virtual, some are in person. You can go to dementia dementiahelp.ca to get the information. The this week and the event on Saturday was all due to a grant and it's and it's the first ever in Canada. So, you know, there's lots of lots of things out there to learn. The big thing is, is they they need volunteers as well in in several communities. They need volunteers to help them.
Thanks. Anyone else? No? Okay. A week ago, it was past Saturday, Robert and I attended the opening of the jewelry store on John Street next to the buyback store there. Pretty impressive store and I asked her and she took me back into her workshop in the back. It was really nice stuff and her eight- to nine-year-old daughter was there and showed me the jewelry that she's making and has for sale. So certainly worth worth a visit. It was a great, great store. Yes, Saturday, I was at the opening of the dementia, Mayor Tom Peckett and I were asked to do opening comments at the at the opening ceremony. And as I said, that that day I was, the day started with a compliment. I was introduced as Mayor Peckett. And I told everybody, you know, that that was a heavyset guy with gray hair. You know, but it was a it's a good ceremony. I had hoped to have been a little bit more attendance at the at the opening ceremony, but Lynn was there wearing two hats, Chris and I were there and and it was good turnout from the public. It was quite a number of booths, but you know, it's their first time and and y'all know how I feel about this particular cause and I'd like to, you know, just encourage the general public to to focus on it and and take advantage of some of these these courses and educational things offered this week to learn a little bit about the impacts of of living with dementia, both for the patient and the caregiver. Next target will be an opening of the new earth, airport works in the industrial park. So you may want to skip to that season for pop soil and flowers and all that sort of stuff. And I just wanted to give a great compliment again tonight on the fireworks. Great display. Yes, sir.
Sorry, one other thing I forgot in in chatting with some of the people on Saturday, it was brought to my attention that there is a volunteer fair on Saturday at the Nick Smith Center. This coming Saturday that Galilee Center is hosting, I believe. They have some hand in it anyways. She's organizing it wherever. So they're in desperate need of volunteers. Most, a lot of the organizations here in town from the Lions Club to Rotary, all of the different organizations, they'll have you know, booths or whatever there. So that is this Saturday coming.
Yeah, that's an important one, too. And I, you know, I I don't know what's going to happen with all those groups over the next decade if people don't start stepping up, you know? The age limit in terms of those volunteers is is becoming a bit of a Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Just one last thing for the dimensions of Lynn and I are both there. Want to shout out to the Lions for providing food. They had hot dogs and water and well done, at least we had some chew on while we were there. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks. Lunch never served as well. Okay, do you have any immediate questions? No? I know there's so many here, but there may be some online too, so. Okay, so we have a closed session, a number of issues, Marika.
The council moved into closed session regarding one matter pursuant to Municipal Act two thousand and one, section two thirty-nine to the to discuss a personal matter about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employee, volunteer or one matter pursuant to the Municipal Act, section two thirty-nine to C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, some circle of science, one matter pursuant to Municipal Act two thousand and one, section two thirty-nine to litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting municipal or local board, Arpor O B D, and their O L T appeal. And one matter pursuant to the Municipal Act, section two thirty-nine to C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board and purchase of land.